Meeting is always on Monday.
Like this thing?
They Monday, great, tell me you. Yeah, okay then. Okay.
We're live, alright. Good morning, everyone. We're gonna now call our first meeting of October to order. I'm gonna ask you if you will put your phone on vibrator, turn them off. Go ask Duane if he leave us in the prayer and Mr. Sly, leave us in the pledge.
Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we come before your presence this morning. First of all, God, we just want to thank you for watching over us and loving us like you do, even though many time we really don't deserve it. God, I thank you for this beautiful day, for the blessings you bestow on us, God, and just help each and every one of us remember that all this comes from you. Be with us during this meeting this morning, God, that every decision we make will be pleasing to you. Just forgive us for failure, in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Can you salute pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Ryan, are you up?
Yes, Mr. President. You should have before you the September the 19th and the September 30th board minutes. I'll ask if there are no changes. Board, please approve said minutes.
Make a motion for approval. Got a motion by Gerald, second by Carl, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Alright. Move right along, we've got concerned citizen, Joyce Taylor.
Joyce is running a little late, I just finished talking to her. She was giving, uh, I guess she was giving confusing information because she was thinking our meeting is gonna be on the 4th and it's on the 3rd. And she's on her way, but, uh...
Long as she was out of bed already.
Oh, she's, she's on, she's on the road.
Okay. Alright, you got it, agree?
Yes, Mr. President, there is one on this list, and that is Dale McCraw, concerned drain causing damage.
What, what was his name?
Mr. Banks district, Dale McCraw.
Dale McCraw, is he outside?
He's outside. Yeah, Tim, Tim come here.
How y'all doing?
Morning.
Yes.
I got some handouts, if that's okay.
Can we get your address? Your name and address again?
What's, I'm sorry, Dale McCraw, M.C.C.R.A.W. I work for the county of Madison as the automotive instructor for the school.
As I said, I didn't know how many board members there were, and that's an extra.
And I, I don't want to waste any of your time and try to make this short and sweet. I live at 126 Seville Way. I've lived there for 14 years. For 11 of those years, everything was fine. Uh, somewhere around early 2019, my driveway started just falling down and collapsing on the lower end. No idea what was causing it. Looked into it, water was coming out of the corner of it. I could see it clearly coming out, but didn't know where. Um, I polyfilled it, there's a receipt in there where it shows where I paid to have it polyfilled in 2019. It was up back up, but when it, it dropped so low that I could see in the tail, the end, the cap that goes to the street, and, uh, it was hollow. Just a little bit about myself too, is I, uh, I worked in construction and carpentry for 20 years. I poured concrete. My first job at 16 was a Ford Ben Graham elevator in waterproof Louisiana. I poured driveways, uh, basements, sidewalks, sheds, barns. Uh, I built houses for 20 years, I built my own house twice. I've been an automotive instructor for 39 years, 14 for the county. So I teach automotive, I have a little bit of experience with hydraulics and all that stuff. So, back to this, and I have video too, if you need to see it. But if you look at the picture, you see my house right there, 126 Seville Way. The county has already repaired a very large hole up here, and I do have some pictures if you want to pass mine. And I have a video of all this too. That was, I saw two girls about 10 years old about this deep in the hole. It backwashed under this man's driveway completely across and washed it out. Y'all have repaired that. Right down here, 25 feet from my property is another sinkhole that was about this big. I could stick my whole arm under the sidewalk and do this, and you've repaired that. And when the engineer, Mr. Johnson, I spoke to about it, he said they repaired it. And I said, "How'd they repair it without pulling the sidewalk up?" He said, "I don't know, we subcontracted it." He admits and is willing to repair this damage of this metal drain down here, which the concrete's busted out. The metal's buckled. On video, my wife is filming me with a three-foot yardstick, sticking my arm under the sidewalk doing this. That goes towards my property. In another video, I dug a hole right there and I saw a void. This was Saturday, I stuck the water hose in it. It runs down the sidewalk and comes out that drain through the pipe, and I have that on film. Uh, I then went up to my driveway and dug a little hole in the sidewalk, there's another void. I stuck the hose, and in the video, I'm sticking three feet of water hose in this void. That's a collapsible water hose, it's not a stiff old green one like we grew up with, in that hole. I, I run it through there, I can hear water running in the middle hole, and I filmed that, but it doesn't come out that hole, it still comes out in the drain. So water is running from the end of my property and coming out into your drain somewhere. When all this went on in 2019 or so, C-Spire run cable through there. So I called C-Spire and I said, "Hey, maybe something happened." They came out and the first thing they did was run cameras through my house drains and said they were fine. Then they ran a camera through y'all's drains and said they were cracked. They admitted to and said that they think they punched a hole in a side lateral drain that runs, you know, and on T to that, on the corner of my property. They even put flags out, said they was gonna repair that little damage, and they never showed up for months and months. And I called them, and I think I gave y'all my notes, but anyway, um, I didn't keep one for myself. But anyway, somewhere in there, I, he said, and there's the name of a guy in there, he said, "Well, I talked to Madison engineer, Mr. So-and-so. He said that Ma- Madison's gonna take care of it when they take care of your damage." The last I heard on this, and I've been fighting this over two years, was the engineer met with me again, because he met with me before and I didn't trust it, because I, I, I had to run around on this. He said, "Look, I'm gonna fix your driveway, and I'm gonna fix down there, and if I pull up the sidewalk and I see the damage that you're saying, we'll just keep going and we'll fix it." I said, "That sounds great." He told me to call the county on October 1st, because that's when the budget start. I have no way of knowing that. So Friday, September 30th, I called, because October 1st is Saturday, and I talked to them. And the guy said, "Well, Mr. McCraw, I think Higginbacher is his name. Well, Mr. McCraw, we've, okay, we've decided to, uh, fix the broken drain down here, but not in your driveway. We don't think that was damaged. My driveway's fallen again. I have extensive, extensive damage that I can prove, and I'll show you the film if you'd like to see it, that I just need fixed. I'm not asking for anything more than that. Fix my driveway, fix my sidewalk. It's the full length of that area's damaged, and there's damage on both sides to me they admit to." So, I think it's common sense, I don't think you need an engineer for this, but if you'd like to see the film of me sticking my arm under the sidewalk and running the water hose, I can show it to you.
Alright, Tim. You got any input on this here?
Mr. Crawford's exactly correct. We did tell him that it was me that meant out there and met with him. I told him we'd fix the box on the left side of his, uh, property, which is leaking, and that we would start digging up sidewalk until we found the void that stopped. At that time, it did not appear that the void was going to the driveway. It may be now, I have a crew out there this morning that is TVing that pipe again to make sure that nothing has changed from when we TVed it a year ago. But if it has, then we'll, we'll fix what, what we damaged.
Okay.
He also told me, the last time we met, that you would do my driveway. You're the one that told me to call October 1st.
I did.
Wanted my driveway fixed.
Right.
So you admitted you told me at that time you'd fix my driveway.
No, I told you that I didn't have money, and that...
So I'm a Christian man, I never lied.
Yeah, yes, yes.
What, what did he...
Sir, sir, you addressed the board, not Tim. Alright, now, Tim, you talking right now.
Okay. When he stood up here, he said what happened. We went out there, we talked, I told him we would start at the box, we would fix the box, we would work our way towards his driveway, and if we got to the driveway and we needed to fix it, we would fix it. If we didn't, we would not. And now his story has changed.
Okay, for, for what my understanding is, you hadn't started to work at all yet?
No, we have not, we've been waiting on this fiscal year, which starts today. We do have a PO that will be issued today for this plus 10 other areas.
Tim, which subdivision is this in?
It's in Lake Caroline.
Lake Caroline, okay.
Tim, uh, this changing gears a little bit, but I, I think, I know Paul, I both brought this up, but do we have anybody that goes out and checks on these bores under the ground to make sure that...
Not 100% of the time. We've got two inspectors and they, they inspect this, they inspect subdivisions being built, they do drainage inspections. So no, we do not have anybody dedicated for these.
There's some way to build a permitting system that they can help pay for somebody to go out and monitor? Because this seems like it pops up quite, quite a good bit. C-Spire doing dam, or not just C-Spire, doing damage to piping and creating sinkholes.
I was unaware of the C-Spire issue at this, this location, but if it is a T running off of the main, back up the property line, that's not gonna be us anyway. But, um, when we run the camera through there, we'll be able to see if there's a T line, you know, running off of there. And if we can get the camera to turn, we'll send the camera up that line.
In this particular instance, you're gonna hire a private contractor to do this work?
Yes, sir.
And what's the timeframe on getting it fixed?
I would hope we get it in the next month. That's what we usually try to do, 10 of these, and then we give them about 30 days to fix. And it's not 10 with the same contractor, it could be two, three different contractors doing it.
Is there evidence that our pipe damaged his driveway?
Well, that's what we're gonna, we're gonna check. If there's no void that we could see when I went out there on either side of the driveway. The driveway is lower than the, uh, back of the curb and gutter. But that's what we said, we'll, we'll start taking up concrete driveway until we get to a point where it's solid. And if that's on the other side of the driveway, then we'll replace up to that point. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Are you saying something different, sir?
No, sir, I, I've been saying that at that time on that day, he told me that, because I, my wife wrote it on a note and we talked about it. That's how I need to call October 1st, I had no way of knowing when his budget was. The T that he's talking about is right in that big metal grain, it's a straight shot up. It's about four feet from the sidewalk is where they had flagged. I mean, I lived there 11 years, nothing happened, and it just slowly did. I think when I polyfilled my driveway, I think that exacerbated the problems above me, because that's when they really started busting out and holes started showing up above. So I think it's common sense, and like I said, I gotta be, to be running a water hose that runs the full length of my sidewalk to the void. So I don't think it'd be hard for them to say pull the sidewalk, they're gonna pull it up to my driveway, guaranteed. Now, when you get to my driveway, there's much to polyfill, but there's voids within the poly.
That's not a problem.
Tim, you mentioned that this starting a new year, and I know that you have so many listed sinkholes or areas.
We do.
Do you mind sending those to the, uh, to the board and as far as...
Be glad to.
These are the ones I've identified and we're gonna look at this year.
Will do.
Okay, thanks.
And that, that list never ends.
Right.
And we're coming into the rainy season, so it's gonna increase a good bit.
You're right.
And sir, I think it's just a matter of time before, a matter of 30 days more likely, unless it just start raining tomorrow and rain for two or three weeks, uh, before they get to your problem. And our budget did just start. So when you go pay your tax, we'll have some money to, 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 uh, fix some of these potholes. Thank you, here. Alright.
Griffin, we might want to enter this into the minutes as well.
You offer that motion?
I'm, I'll make the motion, man. Mr. Dale McCraw.
Alright, motion by Carl, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Any other, uh...
No, sir.
Ms. Taylor, you made it here yet? Alright, she happy, we'll take care of when she come. Uh, moving on to, uh, consent item. I, and a Taylor, motion.
Move on to consent items.
Alright, got a motion by Carl, that's second.
Second.
Second by Trey. Uh, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Mr. Carl Banks, you up?
Uh, I've got a request, I think the, the, um, on the central Madison County Fire District is what, uh... I guess this request from them. And it was basically, when we set them up, you know, they had one year, two year, and they want to retain the person that had one year, his term is, is, is up now. And they really want to retain him and put him on the...
Reappoint him?
Reappoint him, put him on the, um, I guess their, their four year, five year?
Five years.
Okay, reappoint him to a five year.
Staggered, staggered.
So they'd be staggering.
Yeah, that would be, uh, what, Bullard, what's?
Justin Bullard.
Justin Bullard.
Yeah.
Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. And our tax assessor just came in the room.
Sir, good morning, how are y'all?
Morning.
At a previous board meeting, we discussed the details of the software program called Just Appraised, Just Appraise It. And Mike and Greg have both looked at this, and item 27 is just, we need approval for the fact that this is a sole source provider.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Mr. President, I, let me just, yeah, real quick, Mike, you've looked at this?
Yes.
And we're okay without giving further explanation as far as sole, uh, being the only company?
It's a sole source provider of the software he needs. They have technology that's unique and fresh and nobody else has it.
Okay, but you're okay with it?
Yes.
Okay.
And the documentation, I think, is on the agenda as well, and, and I, and I do appreciate y'all taking the time to look at that, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
And item 28 is the actual agreement with the company, we just need approval for that as well.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
That's all I have, y'all have a good day, thank you.
Alright, man, way to move right on through.
Have a good day, Mr. Kennedy.
Alright, our next is, uh, Drew, uh, building ground director.
Morning, Mr. President, board.
Morning.
I have, uh, two items this morning. Number 29 is to award the bid for Madison County Park Restrooms and to authorize the board president to execute the contracts. Uh, we had bid opening on September 20th, and the low bidder was Flagstar Construction.
Okay. And which parks are we looking at? Fairview Park, Estes Banks, Rogers Park, Superior Springs Park?
Uh, just Fairview, Estes Banks, and Rogers Park.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
It'd be A, B, and C, right?
Yes, sir.
Alright, the motion by Carl, I second it. In the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
We have a one-year construction period time. Uh, we're hoping to get within that time, just based on the different sites and mobilization. The architect left it as a one-year construction schedule.
And that one year is normal for some, something like?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And this is for all three?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. That, that would be a good time, if I can get it all, get all three of them done at that time.
Yes, sir.
Sure would be. Which one is it gonna start on?
Uh, I will have to get that from the contractor, uh, after we've executed. They'll submit us a construction schedule.
Same time.
But Supervisor Banks, if you have a preference for which one we should start on, I suspect we can take that preference into account.
I'll think about it.
He can't choose, he don't care the camera right now.
If you don't have a preference, we'll go with whatever the contractor says, uh, if, if, we'll go that way.
If our process would be to try to finish, uh, finish in an order in which they're being used. So the one that has the most use, try to get that one done as quickly as possible, so they can at least have next summer as opposed to summer after next.
That makes sense.
I'll get with the contractor and let them know that, yes, sir.
Alright.
Next item is to receive authorization to advertise for construction bids for the Alliance Fire Station.
Alliance Fire Station?
Yes, sir, that'd be the, uh, Fire Station at the Megasite.
Yeah, Megasite Fire Station.
Alright, I was just wondering why you didn't have the Megasite Fire Station down?
That has been the name since the beginning we've called, was the Alliance Fire Station at the Megasite.
I'll make that motion for approval then, thank you.
Got a motion by Gerald, that's second.
Sheila seconded it.
Second by Sheila, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Is that unanimous vote, Mr. President?
Yes, it was a unanimous vote.
Thank you, sir.
They got a, a time limit on that, Drew?
Yes, sir, right now, our schedule is showing, uh, advertising for bids, I believe on the 11th. We're looking at having the contract awarded, if everything goes according to plan, and issuing a notice to proceed in November of this year with a completion time of one year. That have us finished in November of 2023.
Okay.
And I know y'all went back and revisited the station as well to be able to cut back, where they could cut back, and, and hopefully the, the bid would come in a lot less than what's, has been projected as far as cost.
Yes, sir, we met with the architect, uh, went through and discussed anything that could be done as an alternate, uh, any possible ways to reduce cost and some removing scope.
Thank you, thank you, Gerald.
Alright, thank you. Move right along, your time, Tim. Our engineer.
First item I have before you is the construction engineering inspection contract for Reunion 3. This is with Stan Tech in an amount of $1,441,528.25.
Motion.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Next item I have is a memorandum of understanding between the county and MDOT for the construction of the intersection at US 51 at Green Oak.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Sheila, second, second by Trey, in the discussion.
Yes, thank you. Uh, explain that just real short. I, I read through this thing, and, and if you will, just explain it, that they own all of it over 10 years?
Well, it's, it was a county project that was originally done under a permit, and due to some utility issues, MDOT elected to take it over, and, uh, they be the, I guess, I would, I would say the prime. They're gonna be the one that bids it, it's gonna be an MDOT project, not a county project. But county is, uh, paying for the improvements.
County, and...
As part of Reunion 3.
Paying for the improvements such as?
There's gonna be a new signal, new turn lanes at the intersection on all approaches, and of course, the new fourth, uh, leg of where Reunion 3 will tie into 51.
And so that's part of the 19 to 20 million dollar project?
Correct.
That, that is involved in that, but once it is over, once it has been finished, does that belong to MDOT?
It's my understanding that it will belong to MDOT.
Well, I didn't get that out of this contract, of course, this may not be the right contract, uh, but I'm not...
Well, I...
I mean, I would think...
We turned over the right away to them, I know we did that.
Okay.
So, and the, the normal procedure is that once you build it under permit, that it becomes MDOTs.
Okay, got it, that sounds good, that's really what I wanted, wanted to know.
I, I wanted you to repeat one thing. At, at Green Oaks, am I right?
Green Cross?
Bean.
Green Oaks, yes, Green Oak Lane.
Oak Lane.
At Green Oaks, this improvement will, will include a signal light, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
A signal light?
Yes, and additional lanes, which will help out as just much as a signal will.
Additional lanes. That, I just, my next door friends were talking about the need for a red light.
It has been an issue for a long time.
And it's been needed a long time, and somebody says it's probably coming soon.
Yes.
And also, it's an MDOT project.
It is an MDOT, yes.
Very important.
And it is an MDOT project. Yeah, it is an MDOT project, I think I, I mentioned that in my, to my next door friends, that it was MDOT does highways 51 and 463.
Yeah, and they move on their own time, not the board supervisor's time.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Move right along, Tim.
Alright, next item I have is...
We got a vote on it.
Oh, we didn't vote?
No, we didn't vote.
Uh, who, who made the motion?
Sheila made the motion, Trey made second.
Motion by Sheila, second by...
Trey.
Trey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright.
Next item I have is the final plat of Green Acres subdivision. Uh, this is six lots on 71.4 acres, which has no public infrastructure associated with it.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Final item I have is the Highlands Phase 2. This was presented at the last board meeting, there was an error on the actual plat. It's, it listed a public road as a private road, so the only change here is we're updating page one to change that road from private to public.
Move. Motion by Carl, second by Sheila, I mean Trey, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright.
Tim, I have one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
You, you just repaved Old Rice Road, and I've noticed that there are tons of loggers out there on that brand new road now, logging. Is there any way we can get a bond or something like that to protect our road? Any other idea?
I, well, if, if the board elects to place a bond on this, then yes. Um, I think it's, it's done at the board level, we have no direct policy stating that if you do road on, or work on Road X, you will require a bond, but if the board elects to, we did it before on Woods and, uh, Gray Hill.
What road is she on?
It's Old Rice Road.
Old Rice.
Old Rice Road.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we do that.
I'll second that.
Make a motion that we do what?
That we put a bond on the loggers that are, uh, logging out, directly onto Old Rice Road.
And don't disagree with that, but Tim or Cornelius, would it not be something that, um, that they have to come in front of the, to get a permit to be able to log on, on that road?
On the road, man.
They're coming to me to get a permit, I give them the permit, but knowing when there's an area like new road been freshly did, I'd go to the supervisor and see what they want to do on that, because it's a freshly robed, and like I said, the guy got like 37 acres he finna buy, and he wanna log some in there, tell him out there so he can put him a home on there.
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm not disagreeing that we don't need a permit of some sort. I'm just really trying to make sure we, we do it the right way and, and be consistent with what we've done in the past, instead of when they come to you as far as permit, you, you put a bond on it at that time.
I don't put bond on all them, that while, like I say, I come to the supervisor on a fresher paved road in that area down there, because it's a fresher paved road.
I catch. That's, that's fine.
So they hadn't started down there yet?
No, no, the guy, I talked to him before I come to the board meeting, he, uh, he just finna purchasing land, and he said he, he need get some in there, tell him to log out there, and he gonna want to put two homes on it.
Alright.
Hey Cornelius, before you sit down, I got one question. Uh, those potholes on Calhoun, Calhoun Station we've been talking about?
It was, we doing, this morning, we started on the last week when you first text me on it. We started, the guy, we put clay ground, rewired and put asphalt on it, because the dirt truck was still hauling, so they supposed to be gone now, so we supposed to start this week putting asphalt in those spots.
Hey Cornelius, Cornelius, when, when you repave a new road, I mean, a road in my district, will you give me a heads up to, yeah?
Yes, ma'am, because he, when I called you, uh, last week, he had just called me, I hadn't talked to him. He had just called me and asked me about it.
That's okay.
Sheila, is your motion to, uh, to continue to have it on, on, on that road for a year, two years?
Finishes the work, I guess.
Well, that's the reason I really brought it up because if you want to pinpoint it towards a logger, then it may be best to pinpoint it towards a logger or loggers instead of just putting it on, you know, on everybody for it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just.
I think that's fine. So just use what language Gerald just said.
I guess Tim go out there and determine the distance of the road and how much the bond should be.
It looks great right now.
I mean, I'll support the motions on the table, but you know, you don't know how long you're going to stay on there because you don't know how long they're going to be out there logging, you know, whether it's a month or whether it's six months. Well, so you're going to go, so I'm just asking Supervisor Jones, you want to go by permits then instead of?
I already responded. I said I'd go along with your suggestion, so.
That's the way we've done it in the past is per project.
Got a motion and I don't know what it is.
That's not?
In a second and don't know what it is.
I would, and I'm just going to throw this motion out and Sheila, you tell me where you agree with or not is make a motion and this is, what road?
Old Rice.
Old Rice Road.
Old Rice Road.
That any loggers that is logging that uses Old Rice Road, that they would need a bond put on it by, when they get a permit.
Up to the 30 days.
Yes, sir.
Tim, what's your recommendation?
It would, I don't know the history of this and I don't know how much he's logging, but if he's logging a good bit, I think a bond is a good idea to put on this road.
And the amount?
I think if we do the bond for 30 days and it takes him 45 days to log, it's going to be a pain for him to get a second bond or an extension of that bond. So I think if he thinks he's going to be out of there in 60 days, then we need a 60 day bond, even though the permit's only good for 30 and has to be renewed. It's easy to renew a permit.
But he can do that without a board's motion. I mean, he can go through the, he can go through Cornelius.
Right, for the permit.
That's right. Oh, we want to make sure, I think Supervisor Jones will make sure that there's a bond.
How much does a bond need to be, Tim?
It's typically 50.
50.
All right, so 60 days, 50,000?
Depending on what he's doing. I mean, if he takes 90 days, it needs to be 90 days, but we'll look all in.
Probably, I called him back and he basically, how long we think they gonna take?
Okay.
All right. We got the motion now for, I think, 50,000 dollar bond. You got it, Ronnie?
Yes, sir. I believe so.
All right. That was motion made by Gerald, second by Sheila. Hmm? I'll second by Sheila.
This is a new, yeah, this is a new motion being made by Gerald.
It is, yes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. What else you got, Tim?
That is it.
That was it? All right. Scott, wait. I don't need director.
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
First item I have is to accept the, acknowledge the draft minutes for planning and zoning September 8, 2022.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Next item I have is to set an appeal hearing date for the Jeff Cox rezoning. That was on September 8, 2022 with planning and zoning and that case has been appealed. I would like to set that for November 21, 2022.
All right. Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right.
Next item is a preliminary plat, Lakes at Sulfur Springs Phase One, South Sulfur Springs Road, 11 lots, Supervisor District Five.
Boo. Got a motion by Carl. I second it. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
And the next phase of Sulfur Springs Phase Two, preliminary plat, North Sulfur Springs Road, six lots, Supervisor District Five.
Motion by Carl. I second it. Discussion.
We got growth.
Go buy a lot.
And build on it.
In District Five, Sulfur Springs, build houses. So they can add Phase Three. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right.
That's all I have.
I attorney at law.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Item 39 relates to the EWP requests for Bachelor Creek. EWP stands for Emergency Watershed Prevention. This is a federal program out of USDA where the federal government will come in and help to remediate or improve emergency flooding conditions. When we were in Washington, we had a good meeting. We talked about Opener Bear Creek, but then we talked about flooding in Canton. And everyone who looked at it believes that one of the principal reason the houses flooded in Canton was because Bachelor Creek that runs through District Four, District Five has a lot of problems. The federal people are aware of it. The state people are aware of it and we indicated to them at this board as local sponsor could come back and request emergency monies to have them come in to clear out the situation. So we have to request help from the State Office of NRCS. Then they end up requesting help from the federal people. I've spoken to them. They're aware of it. Can't guarantee anything, but we have a good feeling if we make this request, it's likely to be approved. That's 100% federal funding. It doesn't take a lot of bureaucracy, you know? They'll prove it, they'll prove it and they'll start. So I'm requesting that you allow us to send a letter. Send it. We need it on official letterhead. So if you approve it, I will hand deliver it to the State Office. Also, we need Canton to, Canton ought to be in here today because this is a big deal. It helps flood in Canton. So we need Canton to know that we're doing this, Mr. Banks, and maybe they can put it in the game.
I think Canton, you know, and Ken will be meeting tomorrow, the mayor and board of all of them. And I don't know that they've got some engineering firm, Yahoo, a bunch that might be aware of this. And I think Ken should be sending the letter along with our request.
Right.
This, you know, talking about the need and thanking us, of course, for sending that letter and making this request on their behalf.
On their behalf.
Yeah, all right.
I'm going to try to talk to the engineer and the mayor and a few of the offmen and let them know what we need from them.
So we need a motion.
I can make a motion that we go ahead and make this request to the local, what is it, NRCS?
NRCS.
NRCS. I'm getting used to it now.
That's right.
Preparation and letters.
Yeah.
Motion by Carl. I second it. End of the discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to say that, yeah, Carl, you know, was asking Canton, City Canton to thank us, but I want to tell you, there's a lot of work going into this and Mike, I want to tell you, I know you put a lot of work and effort in this watershed and broadband and others, but a lot of it's in this watershed and we appreciate your work on this as well, yours and Mr. Banks. Put a lot of work and a lot of effort in it. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, and I agree with you. Mike is guiding this thing to where we have an opportunity to
That's right.
reduce flooding and help some of the people here in Canton and in this watershed program as well as in just the interior drainage situation in Canton. So I think that he deserves a lot of credit for his hard work and I think we did a great job in hiring him.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Anything else? Did I carry that?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Motion by Carl. I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Well, thank you. Now, since we have a representative from an engineering firm here, he asked me a question yesterday that I couldn't answer about the greater watershed plan for Madison County that includes Regisland Madison, Gluckstead.
West Madison.
Flora, West Madison. So.
Includes the county.
County, whole county.
Whole county.
So he asked me questions that, I mean, I couldn't answer. He's here. When we were in DC, you know, we got 23550. We heard that there could be, what they call MO money, MO money?
Yeah.
I heard the figure of 150 million dollars. So we need to go after it very quickly. So we can save two weeks if you invite him up here, let him get his question answered.
Yeah.
And then we can move forward. Darren?
Darren.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
So as a follow up to Mike's introduction to what was discussed in DC, the question was, in terms of this funding, this additional funding of 150 million dollars, we were told that there was a request to put together plans or master plans for the priority watersheds that were identified in the stormwater plan that we've recently completed. And in those plans to address items such as water conservation, having recreational components in this plan and items that support economic development in areas throughout the county. So my question for clarification was, based on that discussion, do we need to move forward now with developing those individual specific plans for those priority watersheds? Or is this another point where we're making a request, a development, a request letter for these to obtain these funds or to consider Madison County for these funds to develop these specific watershed plans?
My question would be, what do we actually need because Mike is right, you know, we heard from our congressman and NCRS or, and they asked us to go down this road, but what do we need designs to be able to turn in or do we just need to turn in a request to them for now? For the 150, 175 million?
And the proposal of what?
Yeah, what's the justification that we're going to need, I believe, some type of justification? And it seems in the conversation we had in DC, I threw in economic development.
Right.
And they almost tossed it back to me because basically it has the highest amount of match. We are interested in it, but it's not as high on the priority list as flood control. And then, of course, with flood control, recreation. And of course, the water, having the water supply that would be of great use to everyone. So I think economic development is going to have to be on the tail end, sort of. We have some kind, we have to figure out how to and what the plan looks like. And it's kind of easy to fit economic development in without it really costing you that much when you, if you don't call, you don't call it what it is and just call it excess land or something. But anyway, I think we ought to get together. We ought to have some type of scope of justification for the increased need, other than just saying we want it. I'll see if we can get it and we want it. I think we need to try to justify it a little bit in some kind of way.
Darren, what kind of time are you looking at if we just put a request letter in with the study that we've already completed for the county?
I mean, in terms of timeline, developing a request letter that positions us for the funding, I mean, no more than a week. I mean, that allows us the time to craft the language based on what we were informed during the time in DC and also gives us time to go back through the plan and identify, give the description of the priority watersheds that we've identified in the current plan that we have that meets this criteria of what we've been informed about.
Yeah, I think that the study we already did will justify the greater need because we explained that in that study.
That's right.
We don't need to, I think, identify any, you know, whether it's economic development, recreation, those things. I think just the need for flood control and water supply is enough.
It's in the current study. Yes, sir.
Current study.
If we can do that and get it in within the next couple of weeks, we're ahead of the ballgame and we can move forward and then as Supervisor Banks said, we can always come back.
Right.
You know, and revisit it later down the road if we see a need.
Right.
So you looking for a motion to
Draft.
a letter to request the funds of 150 million?
Of 150 million, yes, sir.
For the water study for the county?
Don't put a figure on it.
That's right.
Might be more.
It might be more.
Yeah.
It might be more. We may need 200 million additional.
Well, I did hear that number thrown out at one point.
That number did get tossed out too.
Yeah, it did get, so I would make a motion to have wagon engineers send a request letter to, along with the study, watershed study for Madison County. Would that get you what you need?
Yes, sir. It will. It will. Yes, sir.
I'll second the motion.
Ronnie, did you get that motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Mike, your turn. End of executive session? Okay. Greg, go ahead. While you're talking, I got a question for Mike.
All right. Good morning, board. I have two things for you, one listed here and one is just a reminder. It doesn't require any action or anything. The item 40 on your agenda, that's the DA lease with Madison County Farms LLC. That is for the building on 43 at $12.75 a square foot, which is more expensive than they were paying, but it is a different building altogether and one that is not subject to flooding.
Right. I'll make the motion.
Greg, is this for 10 years?
It is. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a concern with 10 years, you know, with it, but I wish we could go back to seven years, even five years. Was five years even an option?
Five years was not much of an option simply because of the cost of the initial construction outlay for the lesor. Seven years, the price was up 1575 a square foot, if I remember correctly. So the extra three years saves us a fair amount of money over the life of the lease.
And you've talked with the DA concerning the location, not the lease, well, maybe the lease too, but the location and what's?
We have had preliminary conversations. He's been involved in this from the start. If this board authorizes this lease to be signed today, it saves us two weeks. And in the event that the DA decides he is not interested in that location, I will be back before this board in two weeks asking you to rescind the authorization.
Okay. That's fair enough. And would you reach out to him if this passes?
Absolutely. And he has seen a copy of the lease. He has been involved in meetings with the space planner, with the realtor. He has been involved every step of the way.
And Mike, with this contract, we have a way out before the 10 years?
At the start of every term.
Okay.
Oh, do.
All right.
Well.
Did it get changed?
It did not, but at the start of the term because it extends beyond the life of the term. It's voidable. The termination for convenience clause was rejected by the lesor.
I thought most, if not all contracts, we always had a way out.
Most do. This wouldn't.
Decide the term, but this one did not give us a.
They did not. Upon Mike's suggestion, I mentioned it to the lesor that we would like one. They said no. But because it is extending beyond the end of the term, I understand that's not ideal and nobody wants to do business that way. But if we absolutely had to, because of whatever reason, there is a way out at the start of each term.
I have that concern and I would be voting no on this contract just because we don't have a way out. I mean, by the 10 years. But that's just my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, I made the motion to go ahead and go forward with it. I think that the deal is a great deal and it just. I think that the deal is a great deal and it just solves the problem. Don't have any other alternatives.
The DA file being locked down for ten years?
He expressed some concern. He did. But the other alternative was a seven-year lease and the lessor is not a real big fan of giving us an opt-out because of the cost of construction.
How's this building been vacant over there?
I don't know the answer to that. It's been six.
Five, six years.
Guys, you always have a way out. You should always have a way out.
Say now, uh, do we have a way out or not? You saying we have a way out at a term, at the term. We don't.
It, it is not spelled out in the contract that there is a termination clause.
All right, Mike, were you involved in this contract?
I read it and I made comments to the administrator about it.
Yes, and I forwarded those comments to the lessor, uh, the, the owners of the building. And among those comments, Mike rightfully suggested a, a, a way out. And the, uh, lessor said no because of the capital outlay they're putting out upfront for the remodel.
Mr. President, I would make a substitute motion to approve this contract up to four years or five years. Uh, no, I'm gonna say four years. And after four years, uh, it will give us a way out after a ninety-day written notice to the landowner.
Alright, I, I'll second that substitute motion.
I think that's very fair, actually.
Yeah. Cause, cause reason, discussion part, now reason I'm going with that substitute motion is if we decide to do something else with the DA, uh, of buying building, another building, we still locked in that, to that building for ten years. Uh, and what Gerald said is true. Most contract that we've been approving as a board, we had some way out within ninety days. Of each, either party, either party.
Greg, I thank you, I, I thank you for your work on this contract because I know you put a lot of time in and effort. But this is the only thing that I see that could come back.
Absolutely. The concerns are entirely justified. Uh, i- if we are going to shorten it to four years, this price will change. A- and, and I, rather than approve it, I'd, I'd like permission to go talk to the, the realtor and, and Madison County Farms, uh, rather than approve it without knowing what the price is because I, I can't tell you what the price is gonna be on a four-year lease.
Well, that's fair.
I don't, I don't have it. Uh, at seven years, it was fifteen. So at four years, you're looking at considerably more per square foot.
Alright, I will pull my motion then. With that being said.
I'll pull my motion. And, and I'm open
Thank you.
for a seven-year contract. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I am open for four or seven-year contract.
But, but we need a way out.
Yes, sir.
And the way out.
That's, that's the key is the way out, you know, sixty, ninety days or.
Absolutely. Uh, we'll mention that to the realtor and.
I think we need a way out also, Greg.
Sure.
And I also need to point out that that building is, is, um, was axed. It's been vacant.
Yeah.
For some time. And to be honest with you, I don't know, looking around Canton and being here and there's a business man in Canton. I don't know anybody that, that
Going by.
that's gonna go in there and lease eight thousand square feet.
They're not.
Nine thousand square feet. At twelve dollars in Canton.
It's, it's other problems with it. It's other problems.
Yeah.
You know? Uh, we're, we're.
Motion on the table to.
I remove.
Now, we put.
We don't have any motion.
Well, basically, let Greg to go back and start renegotiating.
He got our, he got our thoughts.
Yeah.
Easy enough.
Yeah, I think we ought to be negotiating from strength as opposed to.
Alright, Greg, what else you got?
Uh, just a reminder pursuant to an order issued by Judge Brewer on April first of twenty-twenty-two, the Madison County Chancery and Administrative Building will be closed on October thirteenth for the Canton Flea Market. Just wanted to remind everybody that doesn't require any action, the motion. It was all done back in, uh, April. So just a reminder.
Okay, uh, before you go. And this gonna be, this is you, Greg, and the board. As, uh, as, uh, the board know that we are applying for the reconnect, uh, grant for broadband. And it had been indicated to us that they looking to fund a perfect application. There is one item that's in that, uh, application that we might fall short on. And that is in, uh, the poverty level. The poverty. And that's, and they, they wanted to be twenty-five percent. But Madison County, you know, we're hitting probably thirty-five percent. Uh, so we gonna fall a little short on that. And we've been looking for ways to try to help that out. And what I'm asking the board to do is, is allow Greg to hire a court reporter for what? Two hours, three hours, they don't need them that long. For next meeting where we can, uh, have some senior citizens and some young folk from the northeast part of the county to come in and basically give some of their testimony of how they, uh, don't have, uh, internet service or have poor internet service. Where it's hinder their studies, hinder them, uh, uh, running their business from home. So hopefully that will boost that item, uh, when they get to evaluating, uh, uh, our contract. So I guess saying all that, I'm gonna just make the motion to allow Greg to hire a court reporter at our next meeting. Uh, I know it'll be two hours.
We're, we're, Mr. Sheriff.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Comcast, excuse me, Comcast is gonna apply for the money reconnect. They're putting in five million dollars. We're trying to get nineteen million dollars. You pledged ten million dollars. We don't want to use it. We want to get the money from USDA. In the application, the lower the income of the area you're trying to work in, the more money you'll get. So we are blessed. And our county is pretty wealthy. But not all parts of the county are similar. But even in northeast Madison County, the income is, is mingled with the wealthy in northeast and the poor in northeast. And if you, if you calculate out the median income, it's probably higher than what qualified for the a hundred percent federal. So you see in, in, you know, and we want everybody to be wealthier. But we also want to get as much as we can. So I think what we need to do, when we submit the application, we need to highlight stories of people in northeast Madison County without internet. So we could attach that to our application to let them know, yes, we're blessed as a county, we're wealthy as a county, but we need this. And hopefully we'll get that perfect application, get the nineteen million and save you ten million.
Mr. President, I, I think it's all, and you're right, Mike. And this is very important for the county as far as the reconnect. And we need to do what we can do to ensure we get some monies, you know, along with the court reporter. And I'm just throwing this out for discussion, Paul, that, you know, it might be that we want to have a, uh, live video of those people, you know, saying what they, what they don't have because it's, this is so important for the county. We're talking about ten, fifteen, twenty million dollars.
It's well worth the cost if we can save ten million.
It, it is. Well worth the cost, so. I'm, I'm throwing that out, Paul, that you may want to.
We can have some video, but what, what type of, what type of additional video?
Well, I'm talking about with you being there at, this is at your next, you talking about the next board meeting or your next, uh?
Next board meeting.
Well, I'm, I'm more or less talking about putting some video together, uh, of different individuals, uh, speaking why it's important to have internet services that they currently do not have. Cause pictures, uh, man, pictures just, it, it takes, it's good to look at pictures and of people talking about what they, what they actually need. So it might be to, uh, I'm just saying that it might be good to have some video taken as well.
Is there some, uh, uh, Heath Hall could do?
Probably. I, I don't know, Greg, we just have to work through them. But you talking about having those people here at the next board meeting?
Yes, cause, cause we want to, hopefully Comcast and, uh, the engineers have, uh, uh, application completed. And we want to have this here as quick as possible to submit.
Well, it may be that we just take those videos then, as you indicated, or, 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 you know, and, and take those and kinda put them by themselves after, you know, after the meeting to put them on another clip or something to show.
We may be able to set up a space outside of the meeting so that they're able to come in and, and speak in here and then we can re-record it, say, in that executive conference room. And more of a, because of the video in here is that camera and, and, and that's pretty much it.
Right.
So if, if y'all will allow me, I'll get with Heath Hall or somebody if Heath Hall says no and we'll set up a, basically a tripod and a, and a few standard questions for them to answer. And, and if y'all want video, we, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, because this reconnect is very important for, for the county.
Yep, and, and this just came up over the weekend. So that's, you know, I hadn't talked basically with any of the, uh, board members. Uh, we just trying to do our best to, uh, like you say, to enhance this application.
That's right.
Uh, you handling thing with Heath Hall. And, and I know something that Gerald just probably got, a court reporter we might can, uh, steal or pay. So my motion gonna be to this, that authorize Greg to find a court reporter for at least two hours, uh, for a next meeting to take record of, of the, of the peoples on the broadband. Second by Trey, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Alright, thank you.
Now time for our comptroller, Nassan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I only have one item, and that is just approval of the general claims docket.
Okay. Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Trey, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Alright. Hi, Sheriff.
Nothing, Mr. President.
Oh, I skipped you there, Ronnie.
Thanks, sir.
Only having one item for you. Uh, first of all, thank y'all, all for the budget, uh, consideration you gave to the Sheriff's Department there. Extremely pleased and I'm very appreciative of what all y'all do for Madison County. Uh, I only have the one, uh, uh, item today, and that is to present the, uh, inmate meal log for the month of September. Just needed an acknowledgement for the minutes, if you don't mind.
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Uh, old business?
None.
New business?
None.
New executive session?
None.
Alright, we going to what? Reset to what day?
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth, nine-eight, say when that?
I make that motion.
Carl made the motion, Trey seconded. All in favor?
Aye.